Good evening, all. I have 7:31, so I would ask you to join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. All right. Mr. Harris, would you call the roll of members?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Arroyo.
Here.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Here.
Mr. Soto. And President Smith-Wadeell.
Here. Counselor Soto is excused this evening. Mr. Harris, if, actually, hold on. Let's go ahead and approve the minutes for January 28, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Great. There's been a motion and a second council comments from the public. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Harris. I wanted to take a moment at the top of the meeting. Technically, we're in the Proclamations, Honors, Awards, and Resolutions of Recognition portion of the meeting, anyway, and recognize the class of aspiring new Americans that we have present in the room. It's nice to be reminded that this is still a place that people want to come and be a part of in a permanent and meaningful way, and it's our job as Americans to make sure it stays that way. So, thank you for coming. We are honored by your presence. We can go, then, to the first public comment period. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. We have one on the list tonight for public comment. That is Nancy and David Lewis.
Nancy and David Lewis actually had their question answered and appear to no longer be present, so.
So, moving right along, then, Mr. President. The reports requested by council. We have none tonight.
All right. Reports of committees of council meetings from the committee meeting on February 3rd. Public Safety Committee Counselor Garcia Molina.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee meeting did meet on the 3rd very briefly. It's talk about, we have vacant positions that are being filled. Three of those people are actually going through hack at the moment, but all five are actually EMT certified, so that'll come to us next city council meeting for a resolution.
And those are firefighters?
Correct.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Garcia Molina. Public Works Committee did, Counselor, hold on a second. Counselor Soto's not present this evening, so I will go ahead and read what report may exist. Give me just a moment. The Public Works Committee considered Administration Resolution Number 5, 2020, authorizing an easement agreement with Norfolk Southern. We'll get into that, I believe, later in the agenda this evening, and that was all that was on that committee agenda. Thank you for bearing with. We'll now go to the Economic Development Committee Counselor Arroyo.
Mr. President, the Economic Development Committee did not meet.
Thank you. Finance Counselor Baker.
Thank you. The Finance Committee did meet. We have one item that's actually on the agenda this evening, Resolution Number 4, talking about water and sewer charges for city-owned and related properties, and so we'll go into greater detail when that comes up on the agenda.
Thank you. Community Planning Counselor Craig.
Community Planning did meet. We had a number of things on the agenda. We had a presentation done by Douglas, the chief planner, and the presentation was on zoning and land use or something like that. Let me see.
Would that have been the, sorry, the presentation on the subdivision and land development ordinance?
That's it. That's the one. We did that, and we talked, we met with Mulberry Tree Investors for 30 North Mulberry Street and the Historical Commission. Also, we met on the Public Art Grant, which is going to be tabled until the 25th.
Right, and we'll address that.
We'll address that in just a little bit.
Yep.
And I believe the Public Art Grant, Historical Commission, I believe that was it.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Craig. Personnel Committee Counselor Diaz.
I'm gonna go ahead and move it forward for Counselor Baker, too, since I was not present.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so the Personnel Committee did meet at their committee meetings this month. We reviewed the following nominations to boards, commissions, and authorities. First, John Spitaler for appointment to the Historical Commission. This is for a three-year term from January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2022. Lisa Cologne for reappointment to the City Revitalization and Improvement Zone Authority for a five-year term from January 6, 2020 to January 5th of 2025. Shelby Nowman for appointment to the City Revitalization and Improvement Zone Authority for a five-year term, again, from January 6, 2020 to January 5th, 2025. After we discuss these motions as our committee, I make a motion that these nominations be approved this evening.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Council comments from the public. Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll return briefly to the report of the Community Planning Committee. Counselor Craig.
I apologize. I forgot something that was on the agenda, and that was authorizing a portion of Longs Park.
To be rezoned.
To be rezoned.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Craig. With that, we'll move into our legislative agenda. Heritage Conservation and Historic Districts.
Yes, Mr. President. Considering the following applications and recommendations from the Historical Commission and Historical Architectural Review Board for improvements to properties within the Heritage Conservation and Historic Districts, the first one is Mulberry Tree Apartments LLC, owner of 30 North Mulberry Street, and they proposed demolition of a two-story frame dwelling to allow new construction on the site.
If it's all right with everybody, I would say we could go ahead and take A and B together. So, would you please read B into the record, Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. The second, Mulberry Tree Investments LLC, owner of 30 North Mulberry Street, proposes construction of a new three-story, three-unit residential building, and those applications are recommended for approval by the Historical Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve demolition of the two-story frame dwelling at 30 North Mulberry Street and the construction of a new three-story, three-unit residential building. Comments from council?
I just have, I just wanna say that this structure has been compromised by successive haphazard alterations, which has also resulted in the loss of its historical integrity, which was reported by the Historical Commission, so that's why I motioned to approve.
Great.
I think it also further this, in addition to being supported by the Historical Commission, they noted that this was supported by the neighbors in the neighborhood where this building exists.
Excellent. Any other council comments? Comments from the public. Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
Next, we have recommendations from the Historical Architectural Review Board. Sarmic One LLC, owners of 222 East Orange Street, requests installation of new exterior security lighting fixtures on the building's east elevation, and the second one is Min Q One, owner of 14 South Lime Street, requests installation of new commercial signage on the building's facade, and those are both recommended for approval by the Historical Architectural Review Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr., there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Harris, do you know if the sign commission engaged on 14 South Lime Street at all?
I do not know that.
All right. Any other council comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. Okay, we move into resolutions.
Resolution Number 3, 2020, resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster adopting and supporting of the community-based arts project in the southeast area of Lancaster City as proposed by the Spanish American and Miller, Spanish American Civic Association, I'm sorry, and Millersville University, and the inclusion of said project in the Pennsylvania Council for the Arts Creative Communities Pilot Initiative.
So, I'm gonna motion that we table this until the 25th of February, pending the amendments that are needed to be made.
Okay, so, we're looking, we're tabling, looking for review of the text of the order.
Absolutely.
Second.
Great. There's been a motion and a second on that matter. Are there any other council comments?
I think just for clarification, what we mean by an amendment to the text is that there is a discrepancy in terms of the amount that is on there, and particularly, who is going to be supporting who financially, so you want to make sure that everything's clear. Let me move forward with that support.
Thank you, Counselor Garcia Molina. Any questions from the public or comments? Okay. Mr. Harris, can you?
Oh, yes, I can. And, Mr. President, actually, I think there should be a motion to, motion to approve, and then the secondary motion becomes a motion to table.
Okay, so, all right, I will need a motion to approve first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, great.
And now, a motion to table.
And I'll motion to table.
Second.
Until February 25th.
I'll motion to table until February 25th.
I'll second it again.
This is why we have Bernie, everybody.
Hallelujah.
So, now there'll be, now there'll be a vote on the motion to table.
Okay. So, coming back to this, any questions or comments from the, from council? From the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
Which renders moot the motion to approve, so now we move on.
Okay, great. Resolution Number 4, 2020.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster exonerating 2019 water charges in the amount of $46,692.50 and the sewer charges in the amount of $29,427.94 for city-owned or related properties at 28 locations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Counselor Baker.
Thank you. Is he in the building? Is Patrick around? No. Oh, he's, oh. I'm gonna ask that Patrick Hopkins come up and just speak briefly on this.
The back row looks so empty, so I figured it needed to be filled. Okay, so this resolution is one that city council considers on an annual basis. The city owns or has relations with the owners of, that's not a great term, has a relationship with all the owners of these properties. All but the airport and the public library are city-owned properties, so we track the water usage and what the sewer billing would be for all these properties, but at the end of the year, we're not going to charge ourselves for water and sewer, and that's why we do this exoneration resolution. For the airport, the only charge that's being exonerated is not all the water usage at the airport, but just the charges for the fire line at the airport. That's why there's no sewer charge exoneration there, and that has been done on an annual basis in exchange for the opportunity to use the airport's gigantic snow blowers when we have a winter where that gigantic snow blower is necessary, which fortunately, we have not had in a little while. And for the public library, while it's not a city-owned building, the, the city supports the library with a direct contribution of $100,000 a year, and also provides in-kind services in the water and sewer charges that we exonerate, as well as providing the trash and recycling hauling from the property, and they use those in-kind contributions as part of their funding formula through the state.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Sure.
Great. Any other council comments from the public? Questions, comments? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. Resolution Number 5.
Resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, authorizing the mayor to sign the standard pipe license agreement between Norfolk Southern Railway Company and remit payment of $5,000 for fees required in the license agreement on behalf of the City of Lancaster. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Great. Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. This is essentially an easement allowing the city to install and maintain a redundant water line. Mr. Campbell, would you like to provide any additional context on the resolution we'll be passing or considering this evening? Thank you.
Good evening. So, generally, this is a relatively straightforward provision, asking for a standard license agreement. We're building the line to ensure that there's appropriate water for the, for the two sites, which are the Kellogg Site and the, the site just to the north. The reason we're looking for this redundancy is that the original line that it's augmenting was built in the 1950s, and we want to ensure that the new will survive any problems that might arise.
I have a que, I have a question. So, what you're saying is that line is connected to the city, the water line. Is that correct?
It's connecting it to our infrastructure, yes.
Thank you.
Any other council comments?
Just, Mr. Campbell, to clarify, I think you mentioned this at our committee meeting, so it might be important to mention here, this is a similar agreement that we've done with Norfolk Southern before for similar projects?
Yes, for similar projects and for an earlier stage of the same project.
Great. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the public? Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. Resolution Number 6, 2020, recognizing February 2020 as Black History Month.
Motion to approve.
Oh, I know. Yes. Resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster designated February 2020 as, as Black History Month within the City of Lancaster, and urging all citizens of Lancaster to participate in this celebration.
Motion to approve. Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. So, for a number of years now, council has resolved declaring February Black History Month in the City of Lancaster in line with the national recognition of this month, which I always just like to throw in a little tidbit, began as Negro History Week, so we've, we've come a long way in that regard. Do we have, would any other counselors like to make comments? Actually, you know what? Ms. Davis, would you just come tell us a little bit about the celebration that we had on Friday?
Good.
So, yeah, on Friday, we had a celebration of Black History Month. It's our fourth annual one that we've done here in City Hall, and this year, we were honoring African-Americans who've served in our fire and police bureaus. So, the programming included performances by African-American artists and tributes to, to fire and one police member through, through videos. It was a really moving and incredible, incredible night. We also, in addition to that, we've installed in the City Hall gallery something we're calling the Legacy Gallery, so it's an opportunity for folks to look at the past, the present, and, and the future of African-Americans who are serving, serving our city. And it's some, a place that we hope to encourage youth to visit. Gerald Wilson, a former police officer, is going to be serving as a docent for the space for groups, community groups that want to come by and learn more, so we hope that it'll grow with the history and the knowledge that's there. It'll be up through September, the first Friday in September will be the last, the last reception, or the last hurrah.
Great. And can you tell us a little bit about what's happening at the train station?
I sure can, Councilman Smith-Wadeell. In addition, we installed last week, last week was a big month for, I mean, a big week for installations for, for public art. We installed work by the artist Gracie Berry in our two station cases at the Amtrak train station. Her work is inspired by the African diaspora. She, she tells the story of and celebrates through her work, I would say, in African spirituality. It's, it's incredible, and I highly encourage you to, to visit. It'll actually be up throughout the year, so, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
President, let us not forget tomorrow at noon, there will be a flag raising of the African, there's a name for it, I forget it, but the African flag will be raised tomorrow in front of City Hall. I encourage everybody to come out and enjoy the festivities. This will be the first time in the history of Lancaster that this flag will be flown.
That's, that's accurate, Counselor Craig, and we're all really excited about it. So, thank you for mentioning that. And while we're just, while we're just commenting left and right on this, can we, would somebody like to say a little bit about the Women of Color Brunch?
Sure.
Yeah, face, Melzy, either one, one of you.
No, go ahead. You can give them more information. Okay.
We're not usually this organized, though.
Yeah. Hi, everybody, and welcome to our guests on both sides. So, last year, we celebrated the first Women of Color brunch, which was really exciting. And just a little bit of background from that, we had a staff person here at City Hall that approached the mayor and asked if we can host an event where it's celebrating women and women of color and encouraging people to get involved in city and the works of city. So, that was a huge success, yes? For those that attended, I feel like it was a huge success. Oh, there's Sharon, who's also part of the committee. So, Councilwoman Craig, as well as Sharon Allen Spann, are part of the committee. So, this year, it will be the second year for the Women of Color event. We're hosting it March 7th at Brightside Opportunity Center. We're really excited. We expanded from last year 135 attendees to this year, well, and we're, to 225. So, we have a lot of programming that we're working on tomorrow evening and speakers, and so the theme is "We're One and We're United," and so there's gonna be several calls of, to action during our event, so we're really excited. And the release of the tickets will be on Friday, Valentine's Day, and so we encourage everyone to go online. We'll be sharing it through social media, as well as on the Women of Color Facebook page and just throughout social media. And for folks that can go on social media, we do have some tickets reserved. The idea is to have a very diverse audience, from young women to women in reentry to professional women, so how we, are, are, how are we working together to celebrate one?
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Melzy.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, are there any other comments from council?
Just a quick thank you to the committee and the City Hall staff that put on the celebration on Friday. I know I left there inspired from the photography, the videos, and the music. It's a great opportunity for the public, if you haven't already attended a City Hall event, to come out, meet your public servants, and, you know, get an opportunity to meet them face-to-face. It's a great opportunity to do so.
From the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. Mr. Harris, do we have a fancy copy? Great. Sharon, would you be so lovely as to officially receive this resolution from me? Great.
Thank you for everything that you do.
It won't, it won't make it.
My pleasure.
I believe that terminates our legislative agenda, which moves us to our second public comment period, open for items that were not previously addressed on the agenda. Please limit the length of your comments to three minutes, and just open by telling us your name and the street that you live on. Also, I've got these now, just to, to keep people a little more honest as far as timing goes. So, the microphone's yours, if anybody would like it.
Red and yellow.
Go on once.
What's this mean?
What? This is 30, so, sorry, this is 30 seconds.
You're done.
Yeah, this is the, yep. Go on once. Go on twice. All right. Great. Well, thanks, guys. We'll just move right along into the report of the mayor. Mayor Sarachi.
And I do not have a formal report, other than to give everyone an update about the Community Police Working Group meeting last night, which I believe there are some of you that were in attendance, so I wanted to thank you for that. We have one more session that's coming up at Brightside Baptist Church. And, Melzy, do you have that date off the top of your head?
The 27th.
Okay, we're gonna double-check that.
I thought it was the 20th.
February the 20th, thank you. And if you haven't had a chance to attend one of the community planning, Community Police Working Group meetings, it would, I would really welcome you all to come. This, these are conversations that we're having that are helping us prepare for our strategic planning process, the next phase of the work. There's been a lot of effort that's been put into mission, vision, values, as well as talking about what are the component parts to the, to the strategic plan that we want to see as we move this, this work forward, and also just acknowledging the, the work that has been done thus far by a really dedicated group of community stakeholders, as well as staff here at the City Hall. So, that's my very brief mayor's report. Thank you.
Mayor, this is 28 from 6 to 8.
6 to 8.
Okay, we got that? The 20th from 6 to 8 at Brightside. Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a report this evening, so we will go to council comments.
I have one comment. I have to apologize to everybody for being disoriented tonight. Two minutes before I came in here, my computer took a nosedive on the street. So, it had me a little, so.